We ready to go, everybody?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I will call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021, for 30:00 PM. To order, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Alright, thank you, everybody. Our first order of business tonight is just to remember our friend, Bill Hubert. He was well-loved in town and a well-known figure. I would ask for a moment of silence in his memory and to think of his family, please. Thank you, everybody. Brian, do we have anything for open forum? Did we receive any?
We had one request.
All emails.
Yeah, we had one request from a citizen who would like to be heard when we do the liquor license for Johnny Macaroni's.
Okay.
And I saw also Nancy Hill has her finger up.
Okay. Nancy?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank Viking Pizza for their donation of 95 pizzas for our grab-and-go last Thursday. They also were kind enough to donate 95 gift certificates for an additional large cheese pizza. They certainly made a lot of people happy that day, so I just wanted to publicly thank them.
That's great. Thank you. They're a great partner and help out with a lot of charities. I saw some of those pizzas on Facebook. They look terrific. Made me want a pizza.
Maybe that will open the door for some other establishments to do the same.
What a great idea.
Not that we wouldn't put pressure on them, but...
We would be happy to be the recipient of that.
We'll spread the word.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anybody else for open forum? Right, Nadine, anybody? I will close open forum. And we're gonna skip over our hearings, because that's not till 5 o'clock, so we'll go right to our action items if you're ready. Mr. Clerk?
Approve the minutes of January 4th, 2021, 5:00 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Before we go to the next action item, I see Hillary here, but I don't see Nadia Clancy here yet. So let's skip-
She did confirm she received the invitation by the other she-
There she is. Just in time. Nadia, we were just getting to your action item, so you are just in time. So back to you, Mr. Spigone.
Action item two, approve the proclamation for the Community Coalition for Change.
Second.
Alright, in terms of discussion, I'm gonna ask Nadia to speak. I just wanna say this has been something that I started working with Nadia on back at the end, beginning of last summer, I think. And we have had many, many iterations of this proclamation and meetings. We have worked with the schools, and I believe they will be adopting something very similar, if not exactly the same as this. So I wanna thank Nadia and the Community Coalition for Change for their time and input in getting this document ready for prime time, as we say. So Nadia, did you wanna add something?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. My name is Nadia Clancy. I am an activist and a leader in the Community Coalition for Change in East Bridgewater. I am a mother of four. Our grassroots organization is called Community Coalition for Change, which was created, as Carol mentioned, back in June. We held our rally at the Town Common. It was created because there was racial incidences at the schools. Concerned parents such as myself, Hillary Level, and Jessella formed this organization. We came together to be a resource for the school and the community. Community Coalition for Change is committed in engaging in meaningful action in addressing inclusion. Adopting this proclamation is taking action and celebrating in a way, in a proactive way, to think about inclusion in settings including employment, education, and innovation. This town proclamation is the basic understanding of how to function with kindness and respect in increasingly diverse society. As such, we are in favor of this proclamation.
Thank you. Any further discussion from my board members?
No, I think it was put together very well.
I agree with Dave. The timing that was put into it and the work was exquisite and I enjoyed it.
But I, you know, I promised Nadia that this wouldn't be something we would stick in a drawer and forget about, but that we would use it for, you know, training and to help us set a path for how we move forward as a community and how we treat each other in East Bridgewater. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Nadia, it only took eight months and three minutes.
I really appreciate all, everyone involved. Like I said, this was a very tedious process. All, everyone got on board. But Mr. Noble, Carol, from the onset, like I said, you've been an ally in regards to trying to get this to be a final in front of everybody. And I believe the chief of police as well, Mr. O'Brien, I would like to say thank you as well for chipping in and putting your, you know, reviewing the proclamation, Mr. Spigone as well. Thank you so much. Oh, Mr. Shidi, how you doing? Just wanna say thank you as well for also allowing other departments' heads to take a look at the proclamation and disputing it along the town administrators. So again, this is something that Carol and I and Community Coalition for Change, sorry, I like to make it CCC, just easier to say, to get this a starting point to make our town more inclusive. So again, I do appreciate all the efforts, everybody involved, especially to our members, Community Coalition members. They really, you know, wanted this and they wanted to guys to understand that they appreciate, they love living in East Bridgewater. They want the town to be welcoming, so this is the reasons why we wanted to make sure that this was adopted. And so I'm just excited. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you to you and your committee members that are here. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Great. Alright. Back to our action items. Mr. Spigone. There you are.
I know, I'm missing some people too, but let's see, two, number three is accept the recommendation to award the General Contract to Titan Roofing, Inc. as the low responsible bidder for the central school roof project.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve the firefighters, paramedics, and firefighter EMTs employed by the East Bridgewater Fire Department to give vaccines to anyone who is not a first responder.
Second.
Any discussion? Chief Haron, do you wanna add anything? I know you sent us a letter, but is there anything you wanted to say publicly? It's like, nope.
Right now. Is Chief Haron speechless?
I have never seen Chief Haron speechless before.
Can we get the front page of the Enterprise?
Maybe he's just scared of the needles. Well, Chief, I do wanna, go ahead.
Our computers running really slow today, sorry. No, in order for the fire, paramedics, and EMTs in the fire department to be able to give vaccinations to anybody other than first responders, we had to get approval from the board in order to do that. So moving forward, if you approve that, moving forward, we'll be able to, you know, participate in vaccination clinics, whether or not they're sponsored by the Board of Health or sponsored by the Fire Department.
Excellent. Thank you so much for getting your people trained to do this and for the number of vaccinations you gave out last week. I'm very grateful that our first responders and others have been vaccinated, you know, I'm ready for mine, so.
It's coming.
Can't wait. Yes, Rebecca?
I don't, Peter, did you give up four? To accept the agreement between?
I was just gonna mention that we missed number four.
Okay, we just wanted to stop.
The roofing? Oh, there's another roofing, I'm sorry.
We'll go back to that then. We'll circle back to that. We'll finish the two chiefs. Two requests from the chief. Thank you for catching that. Alright, any further discussion on approving the firefighters and EMTs to give vaccines? To anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve the request approve the request from the Fire Chief, Tim Haron, for the quarterly ambulance billing abatement as of December 2020 in the amount of $51,661.77.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, heading backwards here, approve the agreement between the town of East Bridgewater and Titan Roofing, Inc. for the central school roof project.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 But reauthorize and amend the intermissional agreement with that created the Southeastern Regional Service Group, so as to extend the term of the agreement for a period of 25 years from February 1st, 2021, subject to any rights, termination, or withdrawal, with all other terms of the original agreement remaining in place without change, and to authorize Brian Noble to execute any documents necessary to evacuate the purposes of this vote.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Noble planning on being here for 25 years?
I'd like to be, if you don't kill me, Dave.
You're not gonna make 25. Is that days or years?
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. And that concludes our action items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Town administrator report. Oh, no, wait, there was one additional action item. Yep. Did you get that? Peter, about Tim Kramer?
Oh, his resignation letter, yes. Right. I would say what is to approve the resignation letter of Tim Kramer from the Capitol?
Yep.
January 25th of 2021?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like to thank him for all the years he's put in, both on the finance and capital. He's gonna be missed. He had a lot of knowledge added to both groups.
He did. There's a great wealth of institutional knowledge there because of all his years in serving, so thank you, Tim, and you will be missed. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now do we have all our action items, Rebecca? Thank you. Okay, town administrator's report.
Thank you, ma'am chairman. I've got just a few things for you tonight. I would like to thank Rob Ken, who applied for and received a sustainable materials grant from the Department of Environmental Protection, and that we signed that contract and paperwork today, so we'll be receiving that money shortly. I'd also like to talk to you a little bit about local receipts. Our local receipts, which includes the motor vehicle excise tax and permit fees up about $81,000, which is good. However, our investment income, our fines and forfeits or miscellaneous fees are down about $42,000, so on the whole, still up, but and holding our own. I'm pleased with the the local receipts number. I'm disappointed with the the other items being down, but it's sort of expected, isn't it? There's a little confusion. The state sent out a press release that said that the local aid would increase by 3%. What they were referring to was unrestricted local aid. I'm sorry? Okay.
Sorry, somebody wasn't muted.
Okay, so consequently, the unrestricted local aid in our budget is only about $200,000 and, you know, 3%. Hey, we'll take it, but it's not gonna solve the whole problem going forward. I would like to tell you that the Finance Committee is in full swing, and budgets have come in from all of the departments, and I'm pleased to tell you. They've all complied quite nicely with the request from the Finance Committee of both a level funded and a level services budget. And so that meeting is scheduled at 6 o'clock tonight would be another Finance Committee meeting, and they're meeting quite religiously on Monday nights. Right now, Town Hall is still closed and open by appointment only. The numbers we have in East Bridgewater still put us in the red, but we're moving back. The numbers are coming down. There is improvement. There is forward motion. And the opening committee meets tomorrow morning, and it will be my recommendation with your approval that we open the front door of Town Hall effective on Monday, February 1st again. Subject to, of course, numbers staying consistent and projecting down. I think that's fine. We have not been immune in Town Hall to the virus, and we've had several employees have to quarantine as a result of exposure, so but so far, a very minimal number of cases, so we're very lucky, knock wood on that one. The engineering RFP is out. It is posted on the Goods and Services Register. We sent emails out to engineering firms today to see if we could recruit additional interest. And it is also posted on the website under a new tab on the right-hand side of the page called Bids and RFPs. And the important thing is to get a copy of the RFP. You do have to register your name and email, so if there are any addendum that come up, they can be forwarded to them. The Town Planner's position is also posted, not only on the website, but on the Mass Municipal Association's website. And I'd like to tell you that as of this morning, we've actually already received one interested resume, so that's a good plus, and he actually followed the instructions to a T. So that's a good sign as well. I think we're going to get, I'm optimistic at this point that we're gonna get a decent pile of applications to sort through, so I think I'm really excited about that possibility. I'm also-
What's the close on that?
Open until filled.
Okay, but one thing I think we have to start thinking about is putting a committee together to interview the potential planner for the town. How many people, who's going to be on there? And get that set up, so when we get the applications in, you know, we have to have a committee in force to start talking to these people, going through interviews, and as a board, we'll have to set up some criteria. And I think, unless I'm missing it, Mr. Noble, one of the things we're missing in that is who the planner actually reports to.
Indeed, we are. I would tell you, at this particular point, the planner would be treated like any other department head in the non-public safety sector. So they would report either to me or to, perhaps, if we set up the the organizational tree of the selectmen, so decided he could report through the building commissioner. But that would be up to the board.
It would report to the elected planning board, no?
No, he would report, he's an employee of the Town Hall, and just like the clerical union is signed by the selectman and they report technically to the selectman, they work under the guidance of the board, but they work under the Board of Selectmen's authority.
Okay.
Also, we have prepared, and I have posted the Town Accountant's position on the town's website, but I have not posted it on Indeed or on the MMA site just yet, favoring to stall at about a week to get some separation between the applications for Town Planner and the applications for Town Accountants. We have also, with the assistance of our IT Director, Ryan McGonigal, set up a new email address specifically for the applications to come to, and thank you for Rebecca for thinking of that idea, so that we will not miss a single application. So that will post next week on the MMA site. We have a little more time, because Phyllis doesn't retire until July 1st. And then also, to echo Mr. Shidi's comments, we will have to come up with a protocol for interviewing and appointing as well. That is definitely, certainly, a selectmen's appointment. And we will have to come up with how you wanna do the protocol. If you're gonna be doing the appointment, you're usually not on the screening committee, because that would create some issues, so we'll discuss that and make some recommendations to the board, and at the next, you can determine how you'd like to proceed.
I think my thought right now, and, you know, Carol and Peter, I don't think we should put the accountant out there until we're finished with the planner, so we can keep them just totally separate from each other, even with how our thoughts are going. Maybe put that off for another couple of weeks.
I think that's fine, as long as we don't get, but it sounds like if we've already got interest in the planning position, I don't think it'll be an issue. My only concern will be, we made that statement and then we didn't get good applicants, we wouldn't wanna put it off too long. But yeah, I would certainly think a couple of weeks anyway.
Right.
Meeting room?
I don't think, considering the amount of time, I'm not sure that's a concern. I find stalling two weeks, no problem. I would like to get it out by, you know, first week of February, so that we had time to spread the word and get a quality-
That's next week.
Right, okay, so the second week of February. So let me look at the calendar before I speak again, 8th of February, will that be okay?
That sounds fine.
Okay. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe the board should plan another meeting as these planner applications start coming in to how we're going to appoint the committee.
Yep, we have a meeting scheduled for the 8th. You wanna meet before then?
Well, we can call it later on. Let's see how many applications we have coming in, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Any questions for Mr. Noble on his report?
Can we just go back to the reopening of Town Hall? What are the figures we're dealing with, Brian, as far as where we are in? We're only talking, we're only gonna get one more report before next Monday, and that's gonna be Thursday or Friday. We're still in the red.
We're still in the red.
I'm just not comfortable right now with reopening the building while we're still sitting in the red category. I, you know, to Carol and Peter, you know, what are your thoughts?
Who's, remind me who's on the committee that's meeting tomorrow?
The meetings went- Yeah, meetings went, right?
Peter, you're on that?
Yeah, so we usually meet Wednesdays, I mean, unless something changed, so I think it's not tomorrow, it's-
Sorry about that.
That's fine. So, yeah, I mean, each, every department has an opportunity to kind of express where they're at as far as the COVID pandemic. Mostly, a lot of the communication, obviously, is with the schools. But, you know, Brian does speak, as well as Rebecca, regarding Town Hall and what the process is. You know, we can certainly discuss it here right now, what its thought is, and then, you know, obviously, bring it to the the rest of the departments. Really, it's just, I think Dave could speak to as well. The department meeting, like, about COVID is really just so that everybody understands what every direction of each department is. The worst thing that happens to a lot of us, I'm sure it's happened to you guys as well as me, is somebody will come and ask you a question about what the school's doing or what, you know, another department's doing, and you're like, I don't know, I have no idea. What the hell they doing? So, you know, this is a way of at least communicating and then maybe, you know, verbally giving them some information back as well. So, you know, it's really a determination, what we wanna do, what the board wants to do, and then letting, you know, getting the input from both Brian as well as Rebecca, and then just letting the rest of the members from the different departments know on Wednesday what the thought process is. So I, you know, I go back and forth between this. I mean, I know there's a missing piece with not having the Town Hall open, but then again, you know, it is a public safety concern, so I honestly, I could be pretty much swayed either way.
Are we getting, Brian and Rebecca, you probably know this better than I would or one of us. Are we getting pushback from citizens or people unhappy that Town Hall is closed? Or are they still able to get the business done that they need to get done under the current arrangement?
It works currently. It is not the best option. One of the concerns, you know, we have met some folks on the sidewalk even, but the feeling both in talking to Sumaloi in the Board of Health and in talking to the employees, that they feel more comfortable with glass between us, which means coming into the building, and obviously, masks are required. But I think, and Dave makes a very valid point, that the numbers drive that decision, and when we meet on Wednesday, we'll have more input from the other departments and from the Board of Health to tell us where we are. I'd just like the board to be prepared to go in the direction of the nod of the committee. If the committee feels it's comfortable to reopen, allow me to reopen. If they don't feel it's comfortable, allow me to stay closed.
I think I'm good with that. I mean, I think too, you know, mindful that property tax bills are due on February 1st. Some people like to pay those, you know, in person. I don't know. It's, you know, I've been saying for a year, like, we're all just, I feel like we're making it up as we go along with so much of this, you know, and you make a decision one day, and then the next day, you have to change it because you have more information.
Why, why don't we hold off making a definite decision until after Wednesday's meeting, and then Mr. Noble can contact, you know, and go from there, what the numbers are saying, and again, a recommendation from the Board of Health.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Noble's report? No? Okay, Rebecca, announcements or staff report?
There was an error on the next two upcoming meetings. For February, we have two meetings, one February 8th and the next February 22nd. Yep, that's it.
I was looking forward to that February 25th meeting as being the only one.
As far as the screening committee goes, for the positions of the planner and the town accountant, I'd be more than happy to help out with that. We did before the treasurer lecture, and we did for the beckings agent. So anybody that, you know, I'd be happy more to help out with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's good. Board discussions?
I'm good.
Peter? They've received.
Yeah, I don't have a lot, but I did two things. One is I wanted to discuss, in the past four or five years, the Board of Health has worked with the schools on food drive. This year, obviously, it was, I think I talked about it back in October when we had it. It was a little off from the previous years because of COVID, of course. We still raised quite a few items, but in talking to Ellen Oliver, who runs the church on Union Street, they are in dire need of more products going forward. They have kind of wiped out what they have. They have had support from some larger companies that supplied them with certain food goods, but that's even been dried up in some aspects because of all the people that they've had, or all the other food banks they'd had to help. So we have put together another drive, kind of the first time that we've done this. Cans for Cupid, it's being called. It's gonna go from January, February 1st through the 14th. There's a couple of places in town, the Jewish Lumber, the Union Progressive Church, and the YMCA that will be collecting the canned goods from the patrons that come out, whether it be citizens or businesses, whatever it may be. Monetary donations as well. I've kind of been put in charge of that, I guess. So we'll be collecting some at the insurance agency, some businesses- So I just wanted to kind of make that a public announcement. We have done some social media posts about that. But, you know, it's really depressing to see just how dwindled not only the Union Church, Congressional Church, but also St. John's are with both food pantries at this time. So just want to get the word out, if anybody can spread that out, probably bring the flyer down to Town Hall if we could maybe work it on the website somehow or do something to publicize it ourselves. I think it would be of a great help to both organizations to try to get that ramped up.
Great idea. And now I'm going to interrupt you before you go to your next topic of discussion because it is 5 o'clock and we need to skip, I can't talk. Stick to the schedule. Easy for me to say for our hearings. So I will open the hearing. Peter, do you want to read the notice on the first one?
Sure. All right, so let's see what we've got here.
Peter, can I assist you?
I've got it. Just said I pull it up. So this is the notice. It's hereby given to the pursuit of the requirements of MGL Chapter 138. Public hearing will be held, well, to the application for amendment, change, alteration of premises of a common particular all alcohol license as follows. Valerie Group Inc., DBA Johnny Macaroni's, 1300 Plymouth Street. Manager John. He's looking to a 40 by 35 outside deck was built on the east side of the building due to the inside restrictions of seating due to COVID-19 pandemic. A public hearing will be held remotely, or I guess it is remotely today at 5:00 PM, Monday, January 25th, 2020.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Valorelli? Thank you for joining us. And I guess, what do you want to tell us about this application and your hearing?
Well, going back to last summer when we were all hit by a million restrictions for restaurants in particular with the indoor dining, we applied for and received a permit to build an outside deck as described, and we ran that deck successfully all summer. And I guess kind of at reapplication time, I found out that we needed to amend the license through the ABCC. So here we are, hoping that it's just a formality because what we did was not cheap by any means, but it kept us alive and survived through the COVID and probably will do the same again. Because I don't think any of us think it's going to be back to normal by summertime. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns. And that's about it.
Great, thank you. And then Brian, the paperwork is all in order on this?
The paperwork is in perfect order.
Okay. And Chief O'Brien, you're all set with this?
Embrun mute.
Can you just unmute yourself, Chief?
Everything's in order with that license.
Great, thank you. And then I think that we had a butter who was here. Is that Mr. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I live at 286 Washington Street, right across from the back of Johnny Macaroni's. And I have no problem with the deck as far as an extension of dining. My fear is in the future, if it's used for outside entertainment or an extension of the bar, that is what I would not be in favor of. So, and I don't think the current owner has that intention. But I've lived there since 1988 and the establishment has changed hands several times, maybe four or five times. So I just am fair of the future, I guess, is what I'm sure. But as the intention right now, there's absolutely no problem with outside dining.
Okay.
Honestly, I will say that as most, everybody knows, I've been in town for well over 20 years now with the original location. And we have no intention of selling in the near future. And we have had a liquor license, I'm sorry, a liquor license as well as an entertainment license for all these years that you'll live behind us. And we have had inside entertainment on and off through the years. And I'm not going to say that I can't promise you we're not going to have outside entertainment in the future, but I can say it would be nothing more than a guitar player or maybe a piano player or somebody with light jazz or light rock or something like that.
And I understand.
As you know, we're not open light and I'll never be, I never use the 1 o'clock end of my license. Now, as we, part of us know, we roll up the sidewalks kind of early. And so that's, that would be my comment on that and you know, hope it helps a little bit.
No, it does. My, I guess fear is if the license is transferred or this changes, how is that?
That would be a different subject, I guess, for another time.
I believe, and I would defer to Mr. Noble if I'm wrong, but if a license is transferred or changed, then that would come before the Board of Selectmen and we would have to vote to approve anything like that. So any, you know, concerns going forward, if it was a different type of establishment, that would be addressed at that time.
Well, that's comforting, but I can tell you in the, since 1988, this is the first notice I've got and this is a butter. So I'm not exactly confident in that process. But again, I have no problem with what's going on right now. I just would like to have some confidence in the future that I'm not going to get overwhelmed.
I'm going to kick that over to Mr. Noble now because his hand is up.
That's fine. Thank you. The liquor license does require the notification of the butters. The entertainment license does not require that. So my suggestion, Mr. Shaughnessy, would be to subscribe to the Selectmen's agendas so far in the future. The entertainment license comes up for renewal annually. And if it was a sale and there would be a transfer of the liquor license, you would be notified of that change and then you'd be able to say, hey, when this comes up on the entertainment license, I wish to be heard as well and register yourself so that you'll be notified of that. But it's definitely not, you should have every opportunity to be heard when that comes up and you should receive notification should the liquor license be transferred. So that would be your notification to pay attention.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here and expressing your concerns. We are glad that, you know, you did that. And I think too, you know, and the chief could answer this if you have specific questions, but you know, any outside entertainment is, you know, subject to noise, you know, restrictions, times, all of those kinds of things. So, you know, that would all be taken into consideration if changes were to come down the road.
I have an Aerosmith book for the summit. Does that affect that?
That can go on.
As long as the board gets front row seats, we're all set.
I'm just jealous you can walk there. I think that's pretty great.
That's all good.
Appreciate it.
Is there anything else to come before the board with regards to this hearing?
I'm all set.
Hearing. No other comments, I will take a motion to approve the change.
Want to close the public hearing?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. You know how I love these public hearings. I will close the public hearing. And now I will take a motion to approve the change.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve the change in alteration of premises at 1300 Plymouth Street to license.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule. We have to wait until 5:15. I see you there Janet Brooks, but we have to, nope, Rebecca's got her hand up. Yes?
Just going to let Mr. Valorelli know. So now that the selectmen have given their go-ahead, I'm now going to forward it to the ADCC for their approval. So they may reach out to you as well.
All righty. Appreciate it.
All right, so am I talking to this?
Thank you very much. We'll see you on the deck as soon as it's warmer enough. Bye-bye. Okay, so we do have to wait until 5:15 before we go to the next hearing. So Peter, does that give you enough time to go back to your other discussion target?
Just quick, I had a resident reach out to me regarding potential senior citizen discount on water bill and trash pickup. I guess Whitman just did something. I just want to let the board know. I'll speak to John Haynes. Obviously falls under his jurisdiction first to see what, maybe what Whitman did, give us a little idea of what they moved forward. And then, you know, I think this may have come up in the past, just to kind of exercise the opportunity if it is there and then report back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay.
I have asked Chris Buckley, who's been working over at Whitman with the VSO agent over there, to get the information from Whitman on what discounts they offer and how those plans were set up, because I think it's both the trash and there's also something for water.
The only
I feel like we talked about this when we had
We did.
The question last year about raising the rates, but it's certainly something that's worth, you know, exploring to see if it can be reconsidered.
The only concern is that the funds have to create a certain amount of collection. So you'd be shifting the cost away from the senior onto the non-senior.
I could say that's fair.
I wasn't making a comment. I was just talking about the procedure and how that works.
Now, is my bill in my name or is it in Dale's name? Because that might make a difference.
I said, there's a lot of work to go into it and I'm pretty sure, as Mr. Noble said, it would be a tough thing to do right about now. But unless that, and I had the same comment at the election, can we at least take a look at it? So Chris, we'll get that info and we'll speak about it at a future meeting.
Yep. I was just going to say that the MMA conference was last Thursday and Friday and it was virtual, which is not nearly as much fun as an in-person conference. But I think that they actually did a really excellent job with all of that. It wasn't like, you know, our Zoom meetings, it was very professional and I really enjoyed the annual meeting and hearing Governor Baker speak. He was asked some questions about his personal handling of the pandemic for him and how that's been. And it was, it was very good. I thought it was well worth attending. The Women Elected Municipal Officials Symposium was Reverend Liz Walker and Mayor Yvonne Spicer of Framingham was very uplifting. So thank you to the town for that opportunity for us to attend.
So Carol, are you trying to say Zoom meetings aren't professional?
The best part about the conference meetings was nobody could see you. Really, really appreciated that.
Yeah, your pajamas on and grabbing a ice cream or something in the morning.
But it was, yeah, it was well done. I wasn't sure how it would be. Like I said, definitely not as much fun as in person. And I look forward to going in person again when we can, but but it was still a worthwhile use of time.
Mr. Noble, could you, while we have a minute left, explain the credits the town gets for attending these meetings?
Certainly. There are several sessions that the board attended that get us insurance credit. If you go to these educational seminars, we get credits back on our insurance. You know, we do usually a pretty good job of coordinating who goes to what, so we maximize that. I'm waiting for the report back from Maya to see how many dollars we get back, but it offsets the cost of our attending. So where the fee was lower this year because it was not in person and didn't require an overnight stay, I'm sort of hoping we can break even.
Great. Good. And it's 5:15. So Mr. Spagone, would you like to read the, we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Spagone, would you read the notice, please?
See Brian waving his head. Yeah, I'm going to have to myself from the discussion of the commercial club. Have a relationship with them, both personally being a member as well as working with them.
Understood. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman?
A public hearing will be held remotely. 175 Central Street, East Bridge Water, Mass. On Monday, January 25th, 2021 at 5:00 PM, 5:15. The purpose of change of manager, Commercial Club of East Bridgewater, Juan Nielsen Ave., Janet M. Brooks as the new manager.
Thank you, Mr. Sheedy. And I see Janet Brooks is here with us. Welcome and thank you for coming in. And would you like to just give us the background on what's happening with this, please?
I'm not getting you, Janet.
No, I can, I see you're not muted, but I don't get, I'm not getting any sound.
Can you hear me, Don Ferber?
Yes. Yeah, we can hear you, Don.
Okay.
No, can you, sometimes you test, can you test your mic? Or maybe, Brian, is there a way that she could call in?
Donna Propsey. There we go. Janet, say something again.
Hello?
There we go.
All right. Dawn Ferber retired as of December 31st and I was hired as the new manager. My prior background is I was the bar manager at the Bridgewater Citizens Club up until October of last year. They eliminated the position to save money because of the pandemic. Being closed so much there in financial straits, so my job was eliminated. I have been on a liquor license before for the Bridgewater Citizens Club. I was on the liquor license there from 2012 to 2016. I have a lot of management experience. I worked for my past, I had worked for Etner Insurance for 25 years in management. I have worked for Hannah Murphy Insurance as an office manager. So I feel that, you know, I would be able to handle this position.
Great, thank you. Dawn, did you want to add anything?
No, I think Janet's a great choice for a new manager at the commercial club. I've had the opportunity to work with her over the past few weeks and I will be working with her a little bit more in the future. So it comes up to Janet. She's going to add a lot to the club.
Good, thank you. Well, we wish you the best in your retirement. Hopefully it's a long and healthy one. Brian, the paperwork on this is all in order?
Rebecca assures me that it is in perfect order.
Do we have a caller that's looking to have conversation?
I believe that's Dawn Ferber.
Oh, Dawn's there.
Yeah, I couldn't get my, I couldn't get any sound, so I had to go to the phone.
Okay, very good. All right, so is anyone here to speak on the hearing other than what we've already heard? All right, in that case, I will close the hearing. I remembered. And I will take a motion to approve the change in manager at the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater.
I'll make a motion to approve the change, the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater, Juan Nielsen Ave. for Janet M. Brooks.
And I will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And please note that Mr. Spagone has recused himself from this vote.
Good luck, Janet.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, is there any other business to come before the board?
Hold on a second so I can get Peter back on. There we go.
All right, I'm back.
And he's back. We approved it. And he's back, we approved it. All right, is there any other business to come before the club, but the club? I should not look at my phone and talk at the same time, is there any other business to come before the board? I should mention, so we do have an opening on the Capital Planning Committee now, due to the resignation of Tim Kramer. People that are interested in that should send a letter of interest to Mr. Noble.
Yep, you can send it to me via email, rjohnson@eastbridgwaterma.gov, there is an application online, along with a letter of interest, and then we'll be in touch with them.
Great, thank you.
Maybe for our next meeting, we'll, again, list all of the considerations we have on a different board.
Good idea. Very good. All right, if there is no other business to come before the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everybody, thank you.